Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please feel free to join us.
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious heaven above, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We just ask, Lord, that we are good stewards of this city that you've blessed us to keep watch over. And we just ask, Lord, that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the January 14, 2020 City Council meeting. Any changes, comments, or corrections?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we accept these as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Passes eight to zero. Before we get started on our monthly financials, I'd like to recognize a local Conway business. We try to do this occasionally through the year, recognize businesses that have made an impact on Conway. And everyone knows this business. It's the Smith Ford family. And I see a bunch of Smiths and some Ketchysides and some Fagans back there. So I have bought, I think, two or three trucks and at least one car from you guys. So I'm very glad you're in business. But if you would, come on up, the whole family can come up, we'd be glad to have you. Hey, dude.
Aye.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All the way up.
All the way in.
Through the gates.
All the way in.
Come through the gates.
Bullpen.
Like a cattle gate. Come on in.
I can speak to experience about Smith Ford.
I can.
Their service is certainly fun. How many times has he loaned me his truck, Chris has loaned me his truck? And when I have to have something to work on because I'm constantly carrying stuff and that, so I really appreciate you guys. Smith Ford was originally founded in 1960 by S.G. Smith. They sold four Montees out of his general store in downtown Conway. And S.G. Smith then turned over ownership to his son, S.T. Eagle Smith, who ran the business from 1941 to 1966 in downtown Conway. S.T. Junior Ross Smith then became the third generation owner from 1966 to 2006. Ross moved the dealership in downtown Conway to his current location on Oak Street in 1974. Ross assigned ownership to the fourth generation, his son, daughter, and son-in-law, S.T. Smith, third Ted, Kathy and Kenny Ketch aside in 2006. And they have successfully operated the dealership since then, with dedicated staff and employees who have greatly contributed to the dealer's success, including Sam Ketch aside and came to become members of the fifth generation of the Smith family. Listen to me, you guys, I don't know how much we appreciate you doing business in Conway and all that you have done for the city of Conway. Thank you very much for giving it a couple of minutes.
May I just say a word of thanks?
Yes.
To the council, Art, and City of Conway for this recognition and to the people of Conway and Paute County for our 103-year-long journey. It's been a great brand. We want to continue.
Not you, boy.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
I haven't seen you in so long. It's been forever.
How are you, sir?
Hi, Kathy.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Hello.
How are you?
I saw y'all.
Good to see you.
Y'all still the oldest there in the west of the Mississippi?
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You'll take it.
I'm about the 32nd oldest in the U.S.
I see you in my place again.
Probably not, huh?
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have our monthly financial report ending on December 31, 2019. Mr. Winningham.
Good evening, everybody. So we've got a full year under our belt, 2019. Come and gone. You can pretty much see, looking at that far right-hand column, kind of how we ended up for the year relative to budget. This numbers you see, for the most part, are on a cash basis, meaning the sales tax we got in January and February are what's reflected here. That'll change a little bit after next month when we actually see the sales tax receipts that we got for November and December of 2019. But you can see, we're probably going to end up a year about 4% over what we budgeted. It's actual number is a little less than that, 3.7%. For the month of December, we were up 2.7%. So if y'all remember back first three or four months of the year, we were down every month. And ever since then, it's bounced back and it's been positive every month since. So certainly glad to see that that turned around for us. If you see, some of these line items are showing a little bit less than 100%. And for instance, that beverage tax, that's only 10 months that you see there. So we'll have two months additional, November and December. That'll get recorded there. And then some other line items, court, district, municipal court fines and fees, we've got some accruals to do there. So as I usually do, once we get final, final numbers, I'll revise these and send that out to City Council so you guys can see more accurately where we ended up. Bottom line, not necessarily what we want to see, a $1.5 million net expense for the year. That's all related to our City Hall project we've got going now. Our expenditures in 2019 for that project were $1.7 million. So not counting that, we had about a $200,000 net revenue for the year. So that's a positive thing for us. On the balance sheet for the general fund, you can see that that reserve account now shows $1 million dollars and some change as opposed to $2 million. We made that transfer in November for the council action that you guys voted to use a million dollars of reserves this year since we've had the lawsuit settlement, City Hall remodel. We've had these things that have kind of needed some boosting from reserves. So and as you'll recall, in our 2020 budget, we've got $250,000 plugged in there to pay, start to pay that back. So over the next four years, we'll get that back up to $2 million is our plan. Kind of related to that, throughout the financials and the balance sheet, you might see some new names and numbers and stuff you didn't see before. These are all audit entries related to 2018. For instance, the last line item in liabilities, we've got an unearned revenue for City Hall lease. So auditors, the money that we got from Conway Court for City Hall, they're calling that a long-term lease. So they're going to make us amortize that over 50 years. So that's that. Street fund ended up the year, net revenue about $162,000. Positive impact on the fund balance. Sanitation fund put almost 2.2 million back in their reserves. Again, capital outlay was pretty minor spending relative to what they'd budgeted. And that's usually due to a timing issue. They'll budget something for the year, but it takes so long to get those trucks and equipment in. It's usually, you know, the year after before we end up actually having to pay for those. And the sanitation fund and the airport fund balance sheets are where you're going to see those sort of new descriptions and titles. If anybody has any questions about that, wants to learn about it, I'd be glad to go over it with you. The short of it is, it's due to pension recognition. We had new government accounting standards that came out in the last two, three years now require those pension liabilities and related entries to be shown actually on the face of your financials. So now that's where they are. That OPEB abbreviation you see in the liability section, we call that OPEB. There's now a standard where we have to recognize a potential liability for our retirees that are still on our health insurance. And that's what that is. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Would you like to share with them about our bonds franchise fee on HP as well as some of the loans we've paid down, paid off?
Yeah, so the quarterly financials I sent out to the council today, we paid off our HP bond issue, which was done back in 2008. It was a $2.2 million bond issue for parking and side improvements at the, was the HP facility, now it's DXC. Is that what's, I believe that's the company in that facility. So that debt is gone, which...
What were we paying on that a year, Tyler?
Almost about $200,000. Yeah, something like that. And you know, that debt was tied to a specific project, so it's not, we would have expected that to pay off. Sometimes, you know, bond issues that are done just to raise capital for street projects or parking projects, a lot of times those will get refunded and refinanced and extended. But this one, we actually paid off. So that's always a good thing for us. And we did have, I think, a couple of loans that we got paid off this year. So our debt situation is looking much more improved than it has been in the last, say, three, four years.
Well, that long, we had, long ago, we had about six loans, now we're down to two. We're getting there. Good.
Yeah, and those two will pay off. One will pay off in 2022 and one in '23.
Wow, that's great.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Great job.
Any questions for Mr. Winningham?
I make a motion to approve the yearly financials and monthly, I guess.
We have a most and a second to approve the financials ending December 31, 2019. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham.
You're welcome.
Well, I like this next one. Next up is Economic Development Committee. We have a resolution of intent for the issuance of bonds for the purpose of assisting in the financing of acquisitions, constructions, and equipping of an industrial facility to be located at 1500 Lolly Road. We have Mr. Gordon Wilborn and Mr. Jamie Gates here tonight to speak to this.
Well, I'll just go over the resolution real fast. This is what you've done before. Just a resolution of intent, non-binding, but it lets the company know that you're expressing your intent to assist in some incentives for this project. Again, like any of these other industrial development bonds, there's no liability on the part of the city. It's an internal company matter, but it allows them to get some property tax abatement. I don't know the schedule yet, but we would be back with an ordinance later in the year if the company decided to move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wilborn, I had a question this afternoon. A constituent asked if the city of Conway were on the hook for any of this. Can you kind of go over how this works? We've done these a lot of times, but you're a lot more qualified to explain these than I am. And I know there's somebody out there watching right now who's watching with bated breath.
These bonds are kind of the terminology in Arkansas, ACT 9 bonds, that's the Industrial Development Bond Act, are secured only by lease revenues paid by the company for the project. So there's no liability of the city, no taxes, no property, anything like that. If the company didn't make their lease payments, the bonds would default, but it'd be the company in default. In this case, it is likely that some related entity to the company will actually own the bond, so it will be really kind of an internal mechanism.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Gates with the Conway Development Corporation. I had explained this to a journalist writing about, or asking about this project today as this is the first step in the process. Should the process move forward, we'll be back here, as Mr. Wilborn mentioned, to adopt a resolution, at which point there'll be a little more detail, not only required, but available to share about the project. But from our standpoint, it's moving forward deliberately. This is a step in the process. It's good news because it's the potential for new investment, new jobs, which this is one that is all net new, positive revenue, jobs and investment. And so as we move forward, we'll be keeping, you know, y'all kind of appraised through this process.
And it is a significant number of jobs.
All right. Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Gates? As I look at this, it says $250 million. I had Mr. Winningham run this information for me earlier today. The largest one of these we had done ever was $75 million, and it was recently for structure land. Can you give us any kind of idea about what we're looking at coming in here? Or kind of under wraps?
Yeah, well, you do have the information in front of you that it's manufacturing-related, and so that would include the real estate building and the eligible equipment. So some heavy machinery. But to your point, yeah, 75 million here, 220 million there. We'll eventually be talking about real money, so.
We're waiting. Thank you, Mr. Gates. That's all I had. Somebody else might have some. Counsel, any other questions? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution of intent for the issuance of bonds for property located at 1500 Lolly Road. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The resolution R. 2009. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have our standing committee. Mr. Hawkins? Thank you, Mr. May. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is. And the first item here is consideration to approve nominations for the Public Art Board. We've had two names sent to us for approval. They are Jenny Strange and Peyton Christianberry, each to a four-year term. And I move that we accept those nominations for that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the nomination of Jenny Strange and Peyton Christianberry to the Public Art Board. Any other?
On this, it says Jessica Rutherford.
Yeah, it does.
They attached the application of Jessica Rutherford.
I think they're the wrong application or the wrong name.
Okay, my apologies. So what was the first, did I get the first name?
Christianberry's on there.
No, the other one's not.
But Jenny Strange is not.
The applications.
They just gave us the wrong application.
That's why I think too.
I think we should go by the memo.
Oh, give me the two names.
You got it.
Jenny Strange and this lady here. We're waiting. Thank you, Mr. Gates. That's all I had. Somebody else might have some.
Counsel, any other questions? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve this resolution of intent for the issuance of bonds for property located at 1500 Lolly Road. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The resolution R 2009. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have our standing committee, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is. And the first item here is consideration to approve nominations for the Public Art Board. We've had two names sent to us for approval. They are Jenny Strange and Peyton Christianberry, each to a four-year term. And I move that we accept those nominations for that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the nomination of Jenny Strange and Peyton Christianberry to the Public Art Board. Any other?
On this, it says Jessica Rutherford.
Yeah, it does.
They attached the application of Jessica Rutherford.
I think they're the wrong application or the wrong name.
Okay. My apologies. So what was the first, did I get the first name?
Christianberry's on there.
All right.
No, the other one's not.
But Jenny Strange is not.
The applications.
They just gave us the wrong application.
That's why I think too.
I think we should go by the memo.
Give me the two names.
You got it.
Jenny Strange and this lady here.
The ones you've named, you've got, it's just they're doing the wrong application here, I think. We think.
So my names are right.
Your names are correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Correct. Any further discussion?
No, I'm confused. I'm sorry.
The two that are on the memo.
The two that are on the memo?
On the memo, yes.
That's the one that I read. Yeah. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Garrett?
That's okay. It's no problem. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Garrett, before I get started, what was our resolution on A1?
R 2009.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Mayor's consideration to approve annual bids for the city of Conway. And Ms. Bryce, are you, yes, you are. You are here. Would you care to come up and tell us about these, please?
Sir, good evening.
Thank you very much.
We had eight annual bids that we would like you to look over, and we are asking you to approve the lowest bid for each one. There was a 5% local preference that we gave to Satterfield.
And that was just on that one?
Yes, sir.
Is it ANO?
I understand what it says.
That's what it is.
If Ms. Bryce says these are the low bids, and you, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Then I move that we accept these bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the annual bids on, looks like gravel, concrete pipe, concrete work, ready mixed concrete, gasoline, diesel, and clay brick pavers. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor's resolution authorizing an application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration and the Department of Aeronautics for the Conway Regional Airport. And Ms. Bryce, since you are still there, I'm going to assume that you're getting ready to tell us something about this one.
Yes, sir, I will. This is basically permission to apply for this grant, master plan for the airport. The most it should cost the city is 4,000. We're working with EDA and ADA, or I'm sorry, the Arkansas Aeronautics Department for the other percentage of this match.
Is that 4,000 or 40?
4,000.
Four?
So actually it'd be, with ADA, it'd be a 90-10 match.
Okay.
From that 40,000. So it would cost the city 4,000 of that.
Cool. Very good. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to apply for grants for the Conway Regional Airport. Any discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The resolution R 2010. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance entering into an agreement and appropriating funds for the purchase of software for land use permitting and code enforcement. I hadn't looked up, but I bet James is standing right there. There he is. And Mr. Knight as well.
And before Mr. Knight and Mr. Walden get up there, I'd like to personally thank both of these gentlemen, as well as Chuck, our city attorney. We've, this has been an ongoing problem in our permitting department. And we went with the, one software group, and it was just not working out. They in turn sold to another group, and we were not getting any service. I think this is, this is the one I told you all about forever. We were having problems with it. Whenever you tried to go and download your application, we were the city of Metropolis. That's fine if you're Superman, but it wasn't working well for us. So Chuck tried to play nice, and when that didn't work, the attorney came out in him, and he did an excellent job. And these two guys have been researching it since, and I think they've really come up with a good plan.
Well, the mayor pretty much covered everything I had to say. But no, I, just for a little reference, this is my office's file on Acela. Chuck's got a binder about like that in his office, and James has got one. And so we, there's a lot of history with this project. But just to give you a little perspective, the idea of, of purchasing a piece of software for this purpose started in mid-2013. There was an RFP put out in 2014 in the fall. It was estimated to go live in May of 2015. Because of problems we weren't able to control with the third party that was supposed to implement this project, we didn't get to sign off on it until May, I believe, or March of 2017. So you can kind of see the timeline that we've been on. We've worked with some third parties to try to, to doctor this thing up, to get it working. And it's just never produced the result that was promised to us as a city for the type of work that we, we needed to do. So this past June, Mayor Casper asked James, Tyler, myself, and Michelle Collins from Permits and Code Enforcement to put together a committee to look at this process of what replacing this might look like. We evaluated a number of vendors. I'm sure James will probably address that a little more in depth. Many, many hours spent with these folks, looking at the product, working with the product, seeing how it worked, making sure we understand fully and asking the tough questions that, that would make sure that we deliver a positive result. And I think we've come to a solution and a product that we're very comfortable with as a committee recommending. And, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to James to talk a little bit more about what that means for his department and this particular solution.
And thank you for reminding me that Michelle played a tremendous part in this as well.
Yeah. So the company we looked, are deciding to go with is Tyler Technologies Intergov, which they're an enterprise solution. We looked at software packages that did only planning and permitting software. And then we also looked at ones that did provided sort of enterprise solution for the, for a city. So when I say an enterprise solution, that they also have packages that handle things for a city clerk and in terms of business licenses potentially, that handle things in terms of finance, that can do ERP, which is, you know, HR-related functions, that it would enable us to, to grow over time. And particularly the things that we were interested in were, when we looked at these companies, are they reinvesting in the software that they produce? Because there's a lot of companies that aren't, and so they, they just kind of cash out the, the software. Is it something where we get handed off to a third party? Because that was, in our experience with Acela, that was one of the, the largest problems, was that as soon as we signed up the contract, we were handed over to a third-party implementation firm and got to play this game of he said, she said, they said this, they said, and that'll just cost more money. And, and just went round and round and round. And so the vendor we've gone with, they, they affectionately said, you know, if something goes wrong, you, you know which neck to choke. And so that's, that's something that was very nice that we have a, a face to deal with in a company. And so, you know, based on our research, this is really the, the gold standard. Aaron has done a really good job of, of negotiating on the, the price. And feel like this is by far the, the best solution in terms of what we evaluated. But also moving forward as we grow as a city, the one that will best serve sort of the, the community as a whole.
I assume this includes implementation services, like full implementation services?
Yes.
Knowledge transfer?
Okay.
And I purposely did not put this in the budget for 2020 because we did not have a final cost.
And just to that point on cost, one of the opportunities that we had in this process is to look at using our cooperative purchasing agreements, which gives us a little bit of flexibility and a little bit of room to negotiate. So I think at the time in 2014, this company put in a, a reply to that RFP. And if you were to pull up that document, I don't want to, I don't want to share that necessarily in a public venue, but you were more than welcome to pull up that document and see that we negotiated much, much better pricing five years later, six years later than they were offering at that point. So we had some flexibility. We're actually going to, as far as initial investment, be right under what we invested in Acela. And at an annual rate, it's very comparable. So we're not seeing a huge swing in this. We were able to negotiate really some aggressive pricing on it.
Any other cities use it in Arkansas?
Yeah. We've looked at so many, I'm going to screw this up.
Fayetteville Fort Smith.
Fayetteville Fort Smith, and I think Bentonville for, for the finance piece of it, which we're looking at tomorrow. So.
And we, we will be able to migrate Springbrook over this eventually, will we not?
Yeah. So the, the, the financial piece that, that Tyler Technologies offers, we're actually demoing tomorrow. We've got an eight-hour, all-day onsite demo. It's going to be great. Somebody bring energy drinks, please. But yes, Springbrook data will be able to migrate to it. One of the other challenges that Acela had was the integration between our financial system and pulling that data back over. It just wasn't a possibility. And so I think with the, the prospect of these being in the same, same family, we, we're going to see some tighter integrations and really some business process things that we can approve across the city.
Good job.
The old program just never work? Or?
Never as promised. I mean, there's, there's pieces of it that we use day-to-day internally because we have to. That's the tool that we have. From the public standpoint, the public portal portion that we were really promised that was going to be this revolutionary piece of it, that's never been fully operable.
Our developers have really struggled with it.
Okay.
It makes everybody frustrated.
I'll bet. You were involved with this, is that right, Mr. Clausen? I mean, do we have any recourse on some of our friends that sold us this years ago, or maybe with the company itself?
We looked and discussed several options, but the best thing to do was just cut bait at this point.
Okay.
Nothing really we can do.
Thought I'd ask.
And one of the, I will say this. Chuck wrote a very, very, very strongly worded letter to Acela when we were discussing.
I'd like to see that.
He should have said it on the phone call.
Yeah. It was, it was an entertaining phone call.
Thank you.
But, but in that, we were originally tied to a 10-year contract. And as a result of that, we were able to get out of that contract and modify it, which you all approved. And so I would personally consider that very much a win in that situation because, you know, they, they had us to continue, you know, going on with that, that contract and, and so.
We definitely saved a lot of money and time. The biggest thing with our, with the people that were dealing with these different vendors, they were using so much time, energy, and resources, really spinning their wheels. And that's right. We did have to enter, to enter into a long-term contract just because of the nature of it. We needed to kind of tie them in too, in a way, so they would stay with us as these products came online. But as mentioned, I mean, we just, they never could deliver for a variety of reasons.
Well, thank you for your work, and thank you guys for your work. And ladies.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. And what number are we on?
It'll be O 2007.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to enter into an agreement in the amount of 146,863 for planning permitting and code enforcement software. Any further discussion?
Real quick, before I forget, I did want to set some appropriate expectations. The implementation on this is going to take a little while. So don't, don't call us next week and say it's not live yet. It's, it's a series of months process. So we'll definitely provide updates to the council, but I didn't want anybody to have any unreasonable expectations of when this will go live. It'll take a little while to get there.
Thank you.
Get it right.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. This is eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. And Michelle. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor's resolution expressing the willingness of the city to utilize federal aid transportation program funds for the Salem Road Bridge project. And hello again.
Hello, sir.
Who we got?
We are asking your permission to apply basically and commit the funds for this Salem Road federal aid project. The total project budget right now is 2 million dollars. So that would be a 400,000 commitment of the pay-as-you-go fund.
With this bridge, we're going to raise it so the trail can go under, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's awesome.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we apply for this resolution for a grant for the Salem Road Bridge project. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The resolution R 2011. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Eight to zero. If we can expand, extend our trail further south, we're going to try to go into that bridge on Dave Ward as well. Yeah.
Good.
That'd be great. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor's resolution expressing the willingness of the city to utilize federal aid transportation program funds for the Kenley Tucker Creek Trail Extension. And Jamie?
Yes, sir.
One more time. And this is resolution R 12. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. So this is just asking your permission to apply for the Kenley Tucker Trail Extension. Basically, permission to apply. This is on the, the very front end. So we're still looking at cost estimates, that type of thing. We have a maximum match of 500,000.
It's 80-20, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to apply for grant for the Kenley Tucker Creek Trail Extension. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins?
Final item here, Mr. Mayor's consideration to request a conditional use permit to allow a childcare facility in O 3 at 703 Donaghy Avenue. This particular item was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on January 21, 2020. And at that time voted eight to nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval with conditions that any expansions or additions to the structure, as well as any changes to the use, shall require an amended or new conditional use permit. Number two, a designated drop-off and pickup location shall be identified at the interior of the parking lot by pavement markings and/or signage. And number three, a fencing plan should be submitted to the Planning Department for approval prior to any installation of any new fencing. And with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
James might have wanted to say something.
No, I'm, I'm, I never know if I'm supposed to come up or not.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use permit to allow daycare facility to be located at 703 Donaghy Avenue. Any further discussion? You just turned walked off. I didn't know why. Thought we made him mad.
I did too.
No, no.
Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Thank you, James. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Next up is the Public, Public Safety Committee. First up, we have consideration disposal of inventory for the Conway Police Department, Chief Spradlin.
Good evening. Got a couple of items to take off our inventory. One is an old Garmin GPS that's outdated, no longer is useful. Need to dispose of that. And the second one is a drug-seized 2015 Chevrolet Spark that we've a lot to sell on public surplus.com.
Is that, was that a drug?
It's drug seized, yes.
Okay. All right. Never mind.
Yeah.
Make a motion to allow the disposal. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request to dispose of this inventory? Any further discussion?
That an electric car, chief?
No.
Just calling a spark?
Sounds like it ought to be.
Nothing like it ought to be.
I never heard of.
It does need a transmission, though.
I do, I do apologize to the Chevrolet people for not knowing that, wherever they are. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is eight to zero. Next up, we have an ordinance accepting appropriation donation funds from Centennial Bank to the Conway Police Department, Chief Spradlin.
Yeah. Late last year, I got a call from Eric King, Centennial Bank, and he said the magic words, we want to give you some money. And I said, I want, I want to spend your money. So going back historically 15, 20 years ago, Centennial Bank was instrumental in purchasing our first patrol bikes that the city ever owned, that the police department ever owned. And if you're talking to Eric, that's what we want to use this money for is to buy, we're still using those bikes today, by the way. But we want to buy five new bicycles, patrol bikes for our crowd suppression team. These are the guys that you see on walking trail in our neighborhoods, especially during the springtime and summer. So that's what we like to use that money for.
We've ran into those guys several times on the trail. It's awesome having them out there. The kids love it.
Yeah. Thank you.
They've got a great attitude, too.
Yeah, for sure.
I make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a second, a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance appropriating funds from donations from Centennial Bank. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Speaker, it is O 2008. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
This is eight to zero. Next up, we have an ordinance accepting reimbursement funds and appropriating additional funds to replace the battery backup system at the Conway Emergency Operations Center. Is this, this is the one that the county split the cost with, the chief?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Mark, have you ever seen what a 106,000 dollar battery looks like?
I have, yes.
It's a pretty good-sized battery.
It's not as big as it should be.
This is for the CEO, Chief Spradlin.
This is for the CEO, Chief Spradlin.
Well, just, just like you said, it's the battery backup system. It's the original system that we're replacing, so it's 18 years old or so. It's an end-of-life per the company, and it's got a pretty healthy price tag right there that we're going to split with the county. So we're asking to receive that, those funds from the county, as well as appropriate funds from the city to approve this purchase.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance appropriating and accepting funds for the battery backup system at the, so the folks who are watching at home, the CEO is the Conway Emergency Operations Center. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, O-2009. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
This is eight to zero.
Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds for the Conway Police Department, chief.
It's just a general accounting ordinance. The only thing I would like to point out on that is this cops and coats program you see right there, a lot of our businesses donate during Christmas time, and it basically allows our police officers to take brand-new coats, especially children that need them for the winter. And I just like, you know, just, just bring out that those businesses in town are the ones that donate, and it makes that possible for us.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, O-2010. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
This is eight to zero. Thank you, chief. And finally, the city attorney is going to give us just a brief update on some of our pending cases.
So as many of you know, of course, part of my job duties and responsibilities include litigation, prevention, and avoidance. That's probably one of the biggest things that we do, kind of day-in and day-out operations. One of the things, you know, that, that James mentioned is, you know, in those type contractual situations or just different relationships that we have, managing those to avoid litigation because it does drain a lot of the city's resources to be put somewhere else. But when those litigation, prevention, and avoidance methods don't really work, then we can end up in lawsuits. Some of them are predictable, and some of them are unforeseen. We have actually several cases pending right now in courts, federal courts, state courts, and some on appeals as well. I don't want that to worry you. Again, we're a growing and city. We're a big city for Arkansas. With all the services we provide, all the, you know, the number of employees that we have, the number of contracts we're involved in, the number of projects that we have going on, some of these things and these issues are going to pop up. I think that our office has done a very good job of aggressively preventing them. But in the cases that, that do go to litigation, some of the ones, there's nine right now that is actively litigated, and what I mean by that is that we're in discovery, we're having hearings, we're having motions, we're filing motions and arguing those motions in front of the court. We're in court order mediation. We just had depositions today on one of the cases. And this is just kind of an ongoing process. So we actually were served with a lawsuit today that we're already, we were ahead of and on top of. We feel, in the civil cases that we have, we feel very, very strongly about all our legal positions, and a lot of that is attributed to the training and, and our people that we have. And I think that they've made good decisions in the field, or in whatever their respective roles are. And so we're, we're in very good positions to start out with, but these things do take time. If anybody's got any specific questions, you know where I'm at about any particular cases. But one of the things that I wanted to do, because these seem to be popping up more and more often, especially with kind of everything we're doing along the construction end of the city, and Finley's group and all that, are these condemnation cases. And they're probably some of the most time-consuming and complicated cases that we have that my office has to deal with. And we've been very, very successful in handling these cases and reaching a resolution to many of them, either be trial or, or some sort of agreement. And instrumental in the success that I feel like the city's had in these condemnation cases has been my chief deputy, Charles Finkenbinder. And so I wanted him to come up today and kind of talk about some of the cases, specific cases we've got going on, give you an update to where we're at, and then let him answer any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know that everybody woke up this morning hoping that Charles Finkenbinder would be here tonight to talk about eminent domain. Your dreams have come true. I'll make this.
You brought your family, that's why it counts.
I did bring my family, so I could make it out of here alive. So, so what Chuck said was correct, and eminent domain condemnation cases, just real briefly, are where the city takes private property for public use, whether it's a sidewalk, road expansion, and overpass. And that's where litigation can come up, because we're arguing about the value of the property taken. So the city has a really good method, and a lot of it's developed by Chuck, where a fair appraisal is made of the property that was taken. And we feel like in every single case, and experts are retained by Department of Transportation to value the property, and an offer is made. If it's not accepted, that's where we get involved, and we'll pursue the matter through the circuit court. So I just wanted to briefly update you on kind of where we are with our litigation on the condemnation cases. Like Chuck said, we've got a lot of projects in the works, a lot of things coming down the pike, and so we're going to be ready for it. We, the Sturgis Road expansion, Chuck and I took that to a jury, actually, in 2018, and that was, we worked really hard on that case, getting ready for it, and the jury verdict resulted in an 84% reduction in the claim. So it was to the tune of about $50,000, $55,000. So we were real happy with that. We've got the Ling case, which is Sixth Street Overpass, a huge case, filing, I think taking up about two boxes of files and charts and hydrology reports. And I know it sounds like a lot of fun, but it's not always fun to read hydrology reports. But we, Chuck and I recently discovered, believed that the methodology used by the expert witness retained by the landowner was flawed. And so we did the research, we filed the motion with an attached brief, and if anyone's having trouble sleeping, I've got copies of said motion and brief. And we're looking at, we had to look at about 200 years of condemnation law in Arkansas in order to put this thing together, but we did it. And so we, we took it to a hearing, we called our witnesses, and at the conclusion of that hearing, the judge found in the city's favor. What this means is about a $320,000 reduction in the claim made by the landowner. So we're, it was a significant win, we believe, in the case, and we've got more motions coming. So we're constantly evaluating the positions of folks, and our goal is to make sure that the city pays a fair value for property, but no more than a fair value for property. We, we've got the Central Landing Boulevard project at Widening. We've got a trial coming up on that. I think that's going to be the last case in that kind of round of cases. That's going to be resolved in April. We're looking forward to that. We've got some motions that we're considering filing in that case as well. Pre-trial motions in civil cases are very important. Civil litigation is very different than criminal prosecution. Lot more rules of evidence, a lot more civil rules, a lot more case law to read. Can get very complicated when you're talking about expert witnesses and their misability of their testimony. So case law that we look at is not just limited to Arkansas. We have to look at federal circuit court opinions. We have to look at United States Supreme Court cases, which again, sounds like a lot of fun, but it's not always fun to read a 35-page syllabus on United States Supreme Court on capitalization approach to land appraisal. Really isn't all that fun. And then finally, we, as many of you know, the Tyler Street Sidewalk Project is nearing completion. I wanted to start by saying that the Transportation Department did an amazing job at that. They were dealing with many, many, many properties, and they reached agreements in almost all of them. As is usually the case, the problem cases came to the city attorney's office. And we, in a very short time, I think, were able to resolve those. We had four pieces of property. Three of the owners had not been able to have, been able to be contacted by DOT. One had, but was refusing to agree. I'm pretty good at finding people, and so very shortly, we had identified and contacted the three missing property owners. And I contacted them, talked to them, explained the project, answered the questions that they had, and in the end, we were able to reach an agreement with all three of them for the value that was offered by the Department of Transportation in the first place. So that's done. And on the fourth, that we could reach an agreement because we felt like we made a fair offer, we were able to obtain a court order that allowed the sidewalk to go in. So it was a good example of, I think, our approach, which is that our, every interaction with citizens should be positive. Every interaction with citizens should take into account the fact that that interaction is going, may be the only interaction that citizen has directly with a city employee. And we want it to be positive.